Go into closed session for some personnel business before we have our other meeting beginning at six o'clock, so if we will, I'll ask someone to make a motion to go into closed session for personnel discussion.
I will. According to North Carolina General Statute 143 through eighteen point one-one, I'll make a motion to the board enter to closed session to discuss personnel issues. Anything else?
Yes, protect.
Personnel issue and to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into closed session and return by six.
Good evening. We've been meeting in closed session for the first thirty minutes of tonight. So I'll ask for a motion to return to open session.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So we're back in open session. Again, welcome everyone tonight to our meeting, February 2016. This year's moving on pretty quickly. As we traditionally do, let's first have our moment of silence. We typically begin our meeting with a brief moment of silence and ask everyone to meditate in your own way for the first few moments, specifically remembering and considering the business that we have before us tonight, reflecting on the work that we need to do for the children in this county. So if you will, please bow with me for a few moments of silent meditation. Thank you. Before we have our presentation of colors, I want to ask Ms. Veronica Williams to come to the podium with her children from the Cub Scout troop, I believe, at New Salem, United Methodist Church, that are going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance tonight, and I'll ask her to introduce them. Welcome you all tonight.
Okay, first, leading the pack is our Cub Master, Thomas Williams, then Owen Hurt, Campbell Collins, Noah Erp, Aiden LaFlame, Caleb Hutchinson, and Sam Williams.
You'll please stand as we present our colors.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, B.C. Just in case we have anyone who may be confused out of the audience tonight about a political forum that is going on, I've been told that there's a political forum going on at the Hall of Justice tonight, and we had a couple of people here earlier looking for that, thinking it was here. So just before we sit through the meeting tonight, if anyone's here looking for that political forum, it's probably down at the Hall of Justice. Mr. Johnson, I'll ask if you have any adjustments to our agenda tonight.
Yes, for a couple items. Dr. Cash, you have some material at your place tonight along with a memo that was sent to you electronically, but you did not get a copy of that memo. We will be recognizing our teachers from the AutoTech program a little bit later in the program, so there is some national publications and that cover memo that goes along with that. We also have, we got some information from the School Boards Association after your packet was put together. We do have three board members that we would like to recognize tonight for their training hours, so when we get to those recognition sections, if you could let me announce those, please. And then we do have several parents here tonight that would like to speak, and this is in reference to the personnel report. So, Dr. Cash, if you think it's appropriate, I would recommend that we let them speak first and maybe move them up on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Since we do have a personnel report with an item of community interest there that has shone over the last week, we'll ask if we have anyone who would like to speak on the public comments section that we ordinarily have toward the end of our agenda. We'll move that public comment, which is item Roman numeral six. We'll move it up to the current time so that we can hear your comments before we consider a vote on the personnel report. So, yes, if you will, as you come forward, let me kind of go over our general rules for this public comment portion. We ask that anyone who wants to speak will come forward to the podium here and state your name and the general subject matter that you're speaking about, and then keep your comments to the board to three minutes or less. And I'll ask Kelly McCary, our Board Secretary, to keep time for us. We've got the clocks here on the front. And then also, just to let the public know that as a board, we do not generally make comments back to you, but we'll take those under consideration. So, if you'll ask you to come forward and introduce yourself to us. Thank you.
My name is Timothy Meadows, currently the president of the North Iredell High School Boosters. And the reason I come here tonight, like you said, first of all, I want to let you guys know that we, as the boosters and the parents, will support whoever becomes our new football coach in North Iredell. It's about the children first and foremost. The reason that we're here and speaking is because the way the process was done and handled is not the way it's been done in the past. The gentleman was offered a job. It was rescinded, brought in for a second interview at the central office, and we've asked some very simple questions. You know, why was that done when it's not been done ever before? Secondly, who was on the committee? Who chose the committee? Were those folks talked to? We know that you guys were, had a closed session discussion about the two coaches or the two candidates, and one of the candidates was never questioned. The committee personnel was never questioned. So I'm very skeptical and very concerned that there's things going on that are just out of context, out of standard, not the way things have normally been done. I'm very curious as to why those things are being done that way. It seems very secretive. And then you have a community up there that is very passionate about the coaches that we have there now and keeping them coaches on staff. And we've not been able to do that in the last ten years. Our coaching rotation up there is just, it's like a revolving door. It changes. It's back and forwards. And I'm just afraid that if this continues and we don't stand up and speak, that we're going to keep getting guys that come in, they stay two or three years, they're out. You know, we got to have somebody good and strong to stand in there and take the place. So like I said, you know, thank you for letting us come up here tonight and speak to y'all. But we would like to have the questions that we've asked via email. You know, some of those, I think, are very simple questions that could be answered. It took you guys almost two weeks to get back to us. And like, once again, you know, we appreciate y'all responding, but we didn't get anything answered. So if you guys could find it in your time somehow or another to give us some sort of answers, we certainly would appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Campbell. I am the PTO president at Cloverleaf Elementary School for the last five years. I am probably the most involved parent at Cloverleaf since 2009, actually 2008, when Cloverleaf started. I have got to see every principal at Cloverleaf. I've got to see every staff member. I've got to work individually with everyone. And I will tell you that at Cloverleaf, I would not want my children at any other school. I have a fourth grader at Cloverleaf now, and I have a seventh grader at the North UIB School. I've seen, I have a statement here that we prepared, but I just want to tell you my individual thing. I have seen the Leader in Me program working through. I am at the school, walking through the hallways. I see a kid running down the hallway and another child correcting that kid. To me, that just touches my heart. I see the things that are going. I see our staff bend down and tie a child's shoe. I mean, they're loving staff. My kid wants to go to school every single day. I have never had a moment where my child says, "I want to stay home," states that he does not want to be there at either one of the schools. I'm speaking on behalf of Cloverleaf tonight, but I am proud to have a student at the IB School, too. Cloverleaf Elementary houses nearly 700 students from pre-K through fifth grade. Head Start is also located on the school campus. Approximately 75% of students are on free and reduced lunch, and about three dozen students are identified as homeless under the McKinney-Vento Act. Despite a multitude of obstacles at home and various living arrangements, students come to school each day to receive a loving education from a caring and dedicated staff. Cloverleaf students participate in many service projects each year. Some examples include collecting items for those in need, such as canned food for shelters, items for soldiers, gloves and coats for children, school supplies at the start of the school year, and other projects throughout the year. All the hard work of the staff has been recognized at the state level with our students showing academic growth for the past two years. Students at Cloverleaf have been recognized as having exceeded expected growth. This is a high honor, even though new state legislation has labeled a school with a D due to overall proficiency. We would love for all of our students to be proficient on end-of-grade tests, but we are even more excited that our students are growing despite having almost 75% of students on free and reduced lunch. Upon analysis of schools across the state labeled as D or F, it is clear that these labels are being given to schools with higher rates of poverty. These labels do not accurately reflect the hard work of our teaching staff. I see that. I'll state that. I see that. These teachers are there. I coach for Cloverleaf, and I'm there till eight o'clock, and there's teachers working there. The halls are still filled with staff. They are very dedicated. Staff spends countless hours analyzing assessment data and planning instructional lessons for students. Most people think school personnel have the benefit of working minimal hours and have the summer months off. This is far from the truth. Teachers at Cloverleaf and schools throughout the county can be seen at the schools working late into the evenings on weekends. During the winter, school staff arrive to work in the dark and leave to go home in the dark. During the summer months, teachers meet and plan for upcoming school year. They shop all summer in search of items for their classroom and teachers. Teachers work really hard to make the classroom environment fun and home-like. After all, our students are often spend more time at school with the teachers than they do at home with the parents. Recent implementation of the Leader in Me program is the beginning of a journey for Cloverleaf students. It is more than just another school program. It is teaching the students how to be in charge of their lives, how to tackle everyday obstacles they will face until the day they leave this earth. Students are learning to be positive role models for others, and most importantly, productive citizens in our society. I see that. We have children. I know I'm running out of my time. I'm with you real quick. I am blessed to be a parent of a student at Cloverleaf Elementary School. I am blessed to have had excellent teachers the whole time. I am blessed to be a member of the PTO, and I thank you for your time, and I thank you for the time that y'all devote to our students.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak before the board? Okay, well, thank you for those comments. We have our consent agenda as the first item on our agenda. We have administration, and I don't believe we have any items under administration. We have the personnel, which is, you can follow with me on the screen, item B there at the top, the acceptance of resignations, retirements, rehires, terminations, and leaves of absence. Item C, approval of classified personnel. Item D, the approval of licensed personnel. Item E, the approval of administrative appointments. And item F, the approval of reinstated personnel. Mr. Todd here in place of Dr. Alvaro Lassane, apparently, tonight.
Yeah, pinch hitter tonight, Dr. Cash, members of the board. Mr. Johnson, it is my pleasure to present the personnel report for the month of February. You've had an opportunity to review this report. I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Todd, I asked Dr. Lassane last Monday, "Are any of these positions on the February Personnel Report newly created positions and paid, or positions paid for by local funds/moneys?" I asked, last week I asked about the number one under rehire. It's a program director interim, and I was told at that time that is, that is a newly created position, and it is out of local monies. Are there any more?
I wouldn't have that information, but I can look for it for you and get back to you on that.
That's what Dr. Lassane said last week.
Yeah, Ms. Lassane, I think I can reference that. Mr. Elliott, James Elliott, the program director of the interim position is a three-week position. That will end next Monday when our Chinese students go back home. That is the only newly created position paid out of local funds, and it isn't a three-week interim position.
I would like to remove that name from the rest of the Personnel File, I mean Personnel File, Personnel Report, to be voted on separately. Make that a motion.
Do we have a second to that motion?
One second.
Okay. Considering that motion, is there any other discussion?
Let me also explain my reasoning. The district, back in September, when we were made aware of the Chinese exchange program, the district had already been in dialogue with the Tower Bridge.
Yes.
And you, and the district, under my understanding, it was my understanding, that you guys, the district, had made arrangements for everything, and that new staff were not going to be created. You had made, you didn't need our, actually, permission for the Tower Bridge back in September. So we had to riff some staff positions back in the end of last year. My concern is, we've riffed student-direct staff, and now we're hiring a person out of local monies that really doesn't have a hands-on position. That's my concern.
Right. Yeah, Mr. Elliott is working with that program and with our 151 students that are visiting with us during this three-week period, along with 25 teachers. And we, when we originally planned this program, those duties were going to fall to Mrs. Kelly Cooper, who was our Executive Director of Secondary Education. She came to me and expressed concern that she could not handle that workload, and so she did ask for assistance and help. And that's why we hired Mr. Elliott to help us during this three-week period.
Any other discussion regarding the motion? If not all those in favor of the motion, which asks to remove Mr. James Elliott from the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let's see, show of hands, so I can see. All those opposed? Okay, so six one. So his name will remain on the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Personnel Report with the exception of excluding out of transfers number six, David Lewis, to be discussed after this, a separate motion. And traditionally, we have included the two board minutes from January the 4th and January the 11th. That's my motion.
Okay, so let me make sure I understand the motion. We have a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of the name under transfers, number six, Mr. David Lewis, from the consent agenda, and also include approval of the minutes from the board meeting, the Committee of the Whole, January 4th, and the Board of Education meeting here on January 11th. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's the correct motion. Is there a second to that motion?
There.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll oppose it.
Do we have a motion? Carrie is six one.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to make a motion, according to the North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, I make a motion that the board enter into a closed session to discuss personnel issue and to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to enter closed session to discuss a personnel issue and preserve the attorney-client privilege. We have, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Well, Dr. Cash, I'm sorry. Can I ask a question? Would it be appropriate to enter into closed session after we do our recognitions presentations? Because we've got some folks here from CATS, and I think instead of them having to sit out here and wait for us, could we, could we go into closed session after recognitions?
I'd be glad to delay that after the recognitions. I'd be glad to delay my motion. And I agree with you, sir.
Okay, all right. All those in favor of that motion with the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
And before we go into that recognition portion, I will ask Mr. Johnson if he would like to introduce the new principal that we just approved.
Yes, be happy to, Dr. Cash. Chris Grace is with us tonight, so Chris, if you'll stand up so we can all get a good look at you. Thank you, sir. Board members, the principalship down at Lakeshore Elementary School became available about a month ago due to the promotion of our prior principal, Kelly Henson. And so we had a lot of interest in this position and ran a good, clean process, and Chris Grace was selected for this position. And Chris Grace was selected, uh, for this position. I'd like to take just a minute and tell you a few of the highlights of his resume. Uh, Chris has a Bachelor of Science in Secondary Education from West Virginia University, a Master's of Science in Education from the University of New England, and an advanced graduate certificate in Educational Leadership from Stony Brook University. He began his, uh, career in public education at Richmond Graded School in August, uh, 1998. Uh, he has also served as a, uh, classroom teacher, um, at, uh, Carissa Middle School, Lexington School District Number One in Lexington, South Carolina, and Windsor Middle School in, uh, Windsor, New York. Chris came to work for us at Shepherd Elementary School in, uh, January of 2011, where he served as an instructional facilitator. Uh, he has also served as the Assistant Principal at Mountmore and Northview IBO World Schools. And his current assignment is Assistant Principal at Brawley Middle School. Uh, Chris is described as a self-motivated individual who believes that hands-on approach to teamwork works best. He's a strong believer in using data to inform his decisions and, uh, the, uh, the analysis of student work. Uh, he is an instructional leader, um, that is recognized throughout our district. These attributes coupled with his, uh, ability to build strong community relations, lifelong learning, and always doing what is in the best interest, interest of student summarizes his educational philosophy. As an individual who supports new in, in educational technology and inquiry-based learning, we feel like he will make a wonderful leader for our STEAM Academy at Lake Shore, which was approved earlier this school year and is doing very, very well. It looks like Chris has his family with him tonight, his wife and his two sons. And so, uh, please, uh, join me in welcoming Chris Grace as the Principal of Lake Shore Elementary School. Congratulations, Chris. Chris, would you like to introduce your family?
Uh, yeah, this is my wife, Jessica. Uh, this is Matt, or Jay, I'm sorry. He's a third grader at Shepherd. And then it's Max, who's a first grader.
Very good. Welcome to board, Chris, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll have our recognitions, uh, again, we have two sets of recognitions tonight. Excuse me. First, we have the AutoTech recognition, the National School of the Year. That's Mr. Brady Johnson to make that introduction.
Yes, Mr. Rogers here tonight. Yeah, Larry, if you'd go to the microphone, you can help us out by giving a little bit of the background on this recognition. But tonight, we are very pleased to, uh, recognize the teachers that make up the AutoTech Program at the Career Academy there in Troutman. This includes, uh, Ashley Pope, and if you guys will stand up as I call your name, please. Uh, Justin Bennett, Russell Parker, Dwayne Troutman, Shane Fox. And this next gentleman is extra special because he is a full-time teacher at the, uh, AutoTech Program, but he is a 100% volunteer, Mr. Gary Ramey. Please stand. Couple of months ago, these guys were recognized, uh, for a national award. And, um, Mr. Pope was recognized as a National Teacher of the Year. So Mr. Rogers is going to give us some details about this recognition. And the gentlemen, we want you to come up and get a certificate. And Mr. Page and, uh, Mr. Galyon, if you guys could, could assist in the presentation of the certificates. Go ahead, Mr. Rogers.
Dr. Cash, members of board, Mr. Johnson, it's quite an honor to be up here to talk about these guys. Now, what I know is this, I know everybody in this room is sad because the Panthers didn't win the Super Bowl. But here's the Super Bowl team right here. This is the Super Bowl team. Be proud because we have a Super Bowl team right here in Ardell County. Mr. Pope, who's Department Chair, that's Peyton Manning. And we're extremely proud of these gentlemen. These gentlemen are very innovative, creative, and more importantly, they care about students. I think our record shows that we care about students. We have many, many, many students that we have, uh, prepared to go right straight into the job market. These guys are outstanding guys. I know I'm supposed to talk about the competition, but I want to talk about them because they are Super Bowl teachers. And they go the extra mile to make sure that our students are prepared for the world, for what the world brings. I cannot commend them enough for their hard work. They go way beyond the teaching scope. And what I mean by that is s- certain things such as making sure that students understand how to fill out a resume, practicing interview techniques. Now, you wouldn't think of AutoTech teachers doing that. That's usually somebody else's function. But they understand what it takes to shape young people into a place where they can be productive. So, without any more to say, I say to you, welcome the Super Bowl team from Ardell County.
Congratulations again. Let's go ahead and do our one other recognition, uh, before we go into closed session. We have a school board training recognition, Mr. Johnson.
Right, and Dr. Cash, this is, uh, actually your award to present tonight. So we've got some certificates up there. But tonight, uh, we would like to recognize Chuck Galyon, Cindy Haynes, and Max James for exceeding, uh, their training requirements through the North Carolina School Boards Association. And the School Boards Association has sent you guys a nice little certificate here. So if you'd come up front, please, Dr. Cash will present those to you. Congratulations. Dr. Cash, uh, if I may, um, Suzie, while you're still flashing pictures and everything, I see a lot of staff members, uh, from Cloverleaf here, uh, tonight. Could we get you guys to come up too? And, uh, we, we try to fill up our, our, uh, homepage with photographs of what's going on in the district. So if you don't mind, come up and let us get a picture, please. As Mr. Campbell said, and Mr. Campbell, please join them.
Yeah.
Um, as their PTO president out there, he has served five years. And, um, he, what he said tonight is very, very true. This is a hard-working, dedicated group of individuals at Cloverleaf. And we're very proud of them.
And Mr. Campbell, I hope that you will take that message to the elected officials in Raleigh. And, uh, that's where it needs to go because that's not up to us and we push that. So please, uh, write letters to News Observer, Charlotte Observer, or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Chloe, did you want to say anything?
Well, I just second everything that Mr. Campbell says. Uh, I think there's any way to know unless you actually get to see it firsthand how hard I set work and every school employee is hurting in our school system. Um, and we do it because we care about our kids. And there's no other job that you're going to work that hard for, you know? The kids are the most important thing. And we're really concerned about the future of education and future of what we're trying to do and, and keeping these children growing and going in the right direction. And so, um, I'm just, like you said, I encourage everyone to be active as a teen and just go through the process and making sure that we need the right people who have their hearts in the right places for what we do every day. Thank you for the opportunity to work with the children because that's, that's really a blessing.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll be at your school next month when you guys do Dr. Seuss's birthday. Um, yeah, so I would encourage all these, you know, I'm sure y'all have classrooms. Other board members might want to read a Dr. Seuss book or a book of their choice. I'm excited.
Can, can I add to that? I was there last year and you should read your Dr. Seuss book before you read it in front of those kids. I'd point that out.
All right. Thank you all for, for being here with us and thank you for being patient with us for a few moments when we, uh, go into closed session here. So, if you will, we've had our motion and, uh, we're going into, uh, closed session. We'll be back as quickly as we can.
Do we need to vote?
Yeah.
We need to vote.
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 Yeah.
Lose a couple. So. Do you think we're all back? I'll entertain a motion that we return to open session.
They're moved.
Second, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, have a motion and a second to return to open session. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're back in open session. Again, thank you for your patience with us. We had one item on our consent agenda that we had removed earlier. So entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda item, which is the name on, I believe it was Roman numeral.
Six.
Six, no, the Roman numeral.
Item six.
Right, I'm.
It was name number six.
Transfers.
Under transfers, I'm losing it here.
Transfers.
Transfers number six.
Transfers number six.
Number six, transfers number six, correct.
I make a motion that we accept the principal's recommendation for the transfer number six, David Lewis.
Say it. You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion regarding that motion? Mr. Johnson, would you like to make a comment?
I'd just like to say that I have conferred with Principal Hayes, and this is her recommendation for the position.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? The motion is to support the principal's recommendation, which is to name David Lewis as the head football coach at North Iredale High School. Any, no other discussion? I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, have motion carries six, one. Thank you. Let's move on to next item on our agenda, under non-consent agenda. We have a lottery application, Dr. Kenny Miller. This is a voting item.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, members of the board, Ms. Johnson. I think this is the longest I've talked in a long time on this. I've got several items here. But the first is a lottery application as part of our ongoing long-range planning for future school sites. We did purchase some property, which we'll talk about in a little bit, which we want to make a public announcement about. As part of the funding for this particular land purchase, we did use some fund balance, and we would like to apply for reimbursement through the lottery proceeds of $650,000 from the state, and that's what this application's for. So I'd ask that the board approve the application.
Make the motion, we accept this proposal to ask for the lottery funds of $650,000 toward this project, South Iredale.
Second, Ms. Chairman.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Got a motion carried. Next item is item B, the request to reconvene the facilities task force. Again, this is a voting item.
Thank you, Chairman Cash. As most people know, we do, we had a facilities task force about 2011, '12, which came up with our master plan, which we've been working off of. That was five years ago. What I would request of the board is permission to reconvene our facilities task force, a new membership on that task force, working with Mooresville Graded School District and Mitchell Community College and the County Commission to plan for the next five to ten year cycle.
Dr. Miller, are the, we'll be looking at our system's needs. I'm just really questioning why we include Mitchell and Mooresville Graded School District representatives on our task force. The money is divvied up by a, or should be divvied up by the percentage of property tax and sales tax. I'm not sure it's any of our business what Mooresville or Mitchell want to do on their facilities, and I'm just questioning why we include those people in our.
Typically, the County Commission, because of economies of scale, not having three separate task forces, would, would like to have us to do all of those together. We do not do the Mooresville piece or the Mitchell piece, but they are included in the meetings, and they will bring their own information related to that. So typically, and I defer to the board, we'll, we'll do whichever I'll recommend to the County Commission. But typically, rather than have three separate meetings, then their representatives, they can use for all three of those task force, and they can have one meeting. So typically, that's the reason.
Dr. Miller, can you also state who, who is a part of that task force? I mean, how's that task force made up?
It's typically, it's made up of the chairman and the vice chairman of each of the boards, which will be the County Commission and the school board. And then each board will appoint for your representation four representatives from different geographic areas of the county. We usually do a north representative, a south representative, a west representative, and a little bit of statesful, and an east and a little bit of statesful representative. So it gives you four geographic areas. Then the county commissioners also appoint four members from those areas. That way, we get a good cross-section across the county. Mooresville Graded has their own particular way that they pick their representative. We don't get involved in that, and Mitchell has their own process.
Mitchell and Mooresville Graded have, have how many reps? Two?
Typically, Mooresville has a board member, usually the board chair, and they usually have two representatives representing their school system. Mitchell did not take part in the last task force, so I would assume that that probably would be similar for Mitchell. Okay? Any other questions?
I will just go ahead and stick my neck out as we discuss this, just in case we veer from our previous protocol, since we don't have a protocol specifically, but historically, as you said, it's been the chairman and vice chairman of the boards. Since this chairman will be going off the board, we may want to have a discussion among our board members that it may be more appropriate that someone who has a longer tenure on the board be part of that planning process, and I'll certainly relinquish that, that role to someone else if we want to. So just before we vote, before it's assumed that because you mentioned it's traditionally been chair and vice chair, it doesn't necessarily have to be.
That's correct.
Just two, two representatives from the board.
Yes, and the board chooses those representatives.
Any other questions or comments, Dr. Miller, regarding the idea of reconvening the task force?
I can make a motion that we give Mr. Miller the opportunity to reconvene the task force as outlined in this memorandum.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And just for clarification, this is to give me permission to approach the County Commission and the other members about the task force. Any, any specifics for the task force, like members, we'll bring it back to you for that vote.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we have a non-voting item, but it's item C, the public notification of land purchase at South Iredale High School. Dr. Miller.
Yes, Dr. Cash. We did purchase 153 acres adjoining South Iredale High School. In November, we closed on this property. The purpose of the property, and this is one of the reasons we wanted to let the public know, the purpose of this property is several-fold. One is the fact that you must plan far in advance for any future locations for schools or expansions at schools, and this gave us an opportunity to get a piece of property a little further north, up around the Troutman area where a lot of growth is happening now. So when you purchase it a little bit in advance like this, it does give you a more cost-effective purchase, because if you wait until you're really pressed and you have to have that piece of property, a lot of times the price goes up. So this gave us an opportunity. And working with Barium Springs, home for children, which is the Children's Hope Alliance now, I believe, they had the track which surrounds South Iredale. That was one of our, our main focuses. The other is traffic, traffic on Old Mountain Road. If anybody's been through that area at school pickup or drop-off time, or when the buses are running, it's an horrendous traffic issue. Currently, we only have the, the exit on to Old Mountain Road. This property will give us access to East Mambo Road, which is another alternative or alter, alter place that we can go. The bottom left corner of the screen, that, that section of the yellow line, that's East Mambo Road. So we would have Old Mountain Road and East Mambo Road, which, for any future site for a school, or for South Iredale for that purpose, we will have another exit area, which can help with the traffic issues. Plus, it also gives us room on campus to stage vehicles, which we do not have now. We, we can redo our parking. A third reason that we need to purchase that property is South Iredale is pretty much locked in. The, the most recent bond referendum allocated monies to do a arts facility and some extra classrooms. We can build those on the campus, but we can't expand the parking, and we really are very, very close to exceeding our impervious. The code requires, this is in a watershed four, critical or protected area, and they only allow 24% of that property to be covered with impervious. That includes parking lots, gravelled areas, sidewalks, buildings, or whatever. We're extremely close. In fact, we probably would exceed it with the new project and expansion. So this gives us a lot of growing room for the south campus. And then lastly, the purchase of the property will give us a site for future location for a potential middle or high school, because we do have aging facilities in Troutman, and they're very landlocked, and should a future board decide to, to either reorganize or change, this gives them a location for either a middle or elementary school in the future. So, so the board's being very farsighted in looking ahead to these types of issues in the future. All of this was purchased with use of lottery proceeds, fund balance, and our recurring capital outlay money from the county. No recurring money from our normal staffing and operational money was used for this. This money is set aside for that purpose. Our recurring capital, our lottery proceeds, and our capital fund balance are all for this purpose. So we, we paid for this upfront from these proceeds, and we did not use any current expense money of any kind. So we want to be sure the public knew that. Be glad to answer any questions related.
Dr. Miller, no questions, but I do have a comment. I'd first like to thank you for doing a public notification. I think that's important, that we make sure the public knows how we're spending their money and what we're spending it on, and why we're spending it. So I appreciate that. I hope that we continue to make sure the public knows when we spend large amounts of money like this. And this was, I feel, a very proactive move on your part and the part of the board and South Iredale is just.